August 20th, if you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could please have some moments of silence for the passing of Vicki Hernandez, Harry Stirrett, and Kathy Thompson. And may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Honce?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
No.
Not this time.
Okay. Department head reports?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. It continues to be a busy summer for Public Works. The crew is concentrating on cleaning, wash downs, keeping up with routine maintenance, carrying any damage to public facilities. They're continuing the routine by sweeping, actually washing down trash cans, benches, walkways. They're also replacing the B and wasp traps. Sorry, my trades are, I can't say the S's very well. Anyways, and doing the landscape of Cemetery Park and Front Street. The crew will be painting tomorrow the intersection at Vons', so please be patient with them. They'll start at 5:00 in the morning and go to, I don't know, that section, probably around 7:00. So it's going to be really busy in that intersection tomorrow. You may want to go around. The crew is still cleaning graffiti as it emerges, so please report as soon as you see it. Also, in other news, we have an insurance appraiser here this week. They're appraising all of our facilities, and Public Works is taking the lead on that and touring and coordinating all her visits. Also, we received our much anticipated draft of our condition assessment report for the wastewater treatment plant. We're currently, as a team, reviewing that 300-page document, and as Bob pointed out, at least an initial review, we don't have to have a complete new plant, which is awesome. But it gives us a good idea of the condition of the plant, the lifespan of the equipment, and help, and the main thing is to help us prioritize the major repairs. And then, finally, I wanted to provide an update. When earlier this year I met with each and one of you, I talked about developing some strategic or business plans for our Public Works Department. Most notably, I finished the first draft that internally we're reviewing. It's a staffing plan that identifies our current state of affairs for the Public Works Department, our future and current needs right now and demands, and how internally the department can evolve to meet those such needs. Those are just, you know, an example of those plans that we talked about earlier this year. And that's it.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Jackie. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Since my last report Tuesday, August 6th, patrol moored 1,177 boats for a total of 4,390 nights. Patrol warned or advised 45 individuals of municipal code violations, which included two warnings for violations within the marine protected areas. Patrol wrote eight citations, which included one citation for 10-2.503I, which is the discharge of green dye in the water. Patrol responded to five vessel accidents and provided public assistance to 77 boaters. Patrol responded to eight medical calls and assisted the sheriffs 11 times. Patrol did 161 security patrols of the facilities and surrounding waters. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. Since our last meeting two weeks ago, we had 107 observations made by deputies. We had 85 calls for service. We made 12 traffic stops for traffic violations. We made one arrest for domestic violence. And on our last meeting, we had the national night out. It turned out fantastic. I'd like to thank Vons' and the Catalina Beverage Company. They provided enough hot dogs for Vons' did, and then the beverage company provided enough drinks for 300-plus people. So it was fantastic. Went through all of that pretty quick, and people seem to be very happy and looking forward to next year. Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. Don't have much. It's been very busy, a lot of back-to-back-to-back calls all happening at one time, getting people called in off-duty to come back field to other ambulances. Some have been at shift change, so we've had extra guys already at the station. And we're just, we're still going around taking photos and getting some things out for brush clearance. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just wanted to provide a quick revenue update. Last year, our TOT revenues topped 7.84 million, which was down from the 8.3 in the prior year, but slightly ahead of where we had forecasted as far as budget purposes. We had 7.79 in the budget estimate, so we should be in line with where we thought we'd be heading into this year. Mooring revenues for July, that's kind of the early indicator I get as far as revenues go. They're down 3%, but looking back to fiscal '22 and '23, fiscal '24, so last July, was quite a strong year, and so down 3% from that. You know, it's not a, not a bad number. Early reporting for TOT, I hesitate to share it just because things can change, but early reporting has TOT up 8%, but that could just be the hotels with nice numbers to report, report it early. So don't normally share it, but there are some signs for reasons to be optimistic for July, so. Other than that, finance is kind of getting geared up for the audit, but if there's any questions?
We're good. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. So last week, we did virtual IT manager interviews with some really fantastic candidates, and we're going to be inviting them to the island next week for in-person interviews, give them city tours, and share a little bit more information about our IT infrastructure. Very exciting. Vehicle hearings, as a reminder, are this Friday, August 23rd, here in the council chamber, starting at 8:00 a.m. And then, a little bit of a not-so-great news, I've been talking with the DMV, and it doesn't look like they'll be coming out again in October. I did offer to help coordinate and find funding for lodging, transportation, shipping of their materials, and they're interested in maybe coming in April. So I just wanted to give everybody a real, like, a far-in advance heads-up. Still going to work on it. I know Assemblymember Lowenthal is going to have some office hours tomorrow, so hoping to talk to Clayton about this in person, so just wanted everyone to be aware.
That's terrible news. That really is. Yeah. And we're nowhere on that kiosk business, right? Or that ATM machine for DMV, whatever you call that thing?
Yeah, I mentioned that as well. You know, if October wasn't going to happen, can we please revisit having a kiosk here in the lobby? And they asked for some statistical information, which I provided them about how many vehicles, you know, our population size and whatnot. So they're going to take a look into that, but I don't, not very optimistic about it at this point. Yeah.
No, that's a shame. Any questions?
Is there anyone that you want us to write a letter to, to be able to push that forward, that we can, on behalf of the council, kind of both highlight how important it is for that visit every year, every, twice a year if possible, but also the kiosk itself? I'm assuming that we would be willing to put in a significant amount of money to make sure that that can happen, because them not coming is not okay.
Yeah, Eric O'Donnell from Townsend was here last week, and I met with him, and I talked to him about this very issue, and he's going to be in Sacramento the next couple of weeks, so he's going to help lobby and change this, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Contact the governor.
Are you meant to get an update on that? Is there a certain date that we can get an update?
Certainly, the next City Council meeting, I'll have an update, if not before then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, on a whole different topic, somebody told me that they saw on Facebook that somebody for landlord-tenant relations is going to be here in council chambers in September sometime? Do you know anything about that?
No, I've, I've been talking to a nonprofit over town.
I know they'll come in the resource fair, which I believe is October, but I haven't heard anything of maybe September.
Right. And that's not going to be here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Ruffo, Contract Planner. I don't have any specific updates for you this evening, but I did want to let you know that tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting has been rescheduled for next Wednesday, August 28th. There are two items on the agenda that night. One is the election of officers for the Planning Commission, which was sat earlier this year. And then also, there will be an item for the Cameron Hotel, so that's 301 Beacon Street. So the project is demolition of the existing apartment building on the property and construction of a new 37-bedroom hotel with four employee housing units.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exciting. Any questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Dave Hart's not here. He's still on vacation, so he's not here tonight, but he might have or would have suggested or told you that summer camp, and this is the final week of it, so our summer camp, very successful this year. The staff did a great job. They're all heading back to school, or college, or wherever else they're heading now. A little end-of-the-year party coming up for them and thank them. Same with our suburb this year with the trash. I just want to, again, express my thanks to Congressman Garcia, Robert Garcia and his staff, for coming out last week. They spent quite a bit of time on the island, all of which will benefit us. They were out in the interior, but they also did a ceremonial presentation, a mayor and council, for a $500,000 airmark from Congressman Garcia that will go to the Cabrillo Mall reconstruction project. And the congressman and his staff are very adamant about continuing both their financial and support for that project. That's very encouraging. He's, again, I said it last week, it's the third time he's been out here in 18 months. It's, it's great to have his support. Kelly, I already talked about Planning Commission being kicked, continued for one week. Just want to let council know that we're still preparing staff reports for a number of items that we have discussed both last meeting and the meeting before. We will be agendizing the following for council's consideration over the next several meetings coming up here in September, and that being the cruise ship ordinance, both for warfage and whether or not any, we want to make any changes to the existing cruise ship ordinance, amendments to the street vending regulations, discussion regarding options for recreational marijuana, and any considerations that council might have regarding that, landlord-tenant regulations, and e-bike and off-road vehicle regulations, including helmets and tightening up some of those that we have. So those are all the things that we have coming before you here in the next probably two or three meetings. A lot of ground to cover, and then we'll take your input for consideration and come back with any changes or what you would like to see.
And then the transient rental licenses and all of that, that'll go before the Planning Commission first?
We'll go to, we'll go to Planning Commission first, run it through them. May have, in addition to Planning Commission, some additional public meetings once we have that narrowed down, and then bring it back to council.
We're going to be busy. Those are going to be some hot topics.
All right, and so for all of those, they'll be general business, so that will be open to public feedback. We're looking for feedback from the public, not just us, from the public as well, as far as, you know, the recreational marijuana, the cruise ships, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, I'd say every, all of them, but maybe not necessarily the e-bikes. We have a pretty solid e-bike regulation that we think we can follow, that we've, we've received from another city.
Okay, cool.
Certainly open to discussion, all of them, but the other four, absolutely, yes.
Okay, great, yeah, because I just know after our last meeting where we were talking about cruise ship stuff specifically, there, I've, a lot of people in town have been talking to me about stuff, so I'm glad that they'll be able to voice their opinion on that. So just be looking for the agendas, people.
Yeah. And then, on the medical delivery, though, we'll be getting that information out or publicizing that process?
That application process will be going out shortly, and then the dates, once, once we have that, that'll be coming back in front of council once we receive the applications.
Is our city attorney on board?
Yes, I'm here tonight. I just, I don't have anything specific, but I will introduce Bennett Givens discussing the wireless regulation ordinance later on in the meeting today.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Scott. Okay, council member reports.
I can go first. Mine are kind of simple today. We have the Catalina Island Women's Forum Paint Night with Ms. Favi on Friday, August 30th. That'll be 5:30 to 7:30 at the parish hall. All the proceeds for that will go towards this scholarship for the high school girls. And to stay on the school topic, we have TK Kinder Orientation Monday, 5:30 in the auditorium. For 6th grade, it's tomorrow, 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. at the auditorium, and 9th grade orientation. Also tomorrow, 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. in the auditorium. And one more for tomorrow. We have Clayton Heard that will be here with, from the Assembly, Josh Lowenthal's office, and he's going to be available from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. in front of the brew house. A couple topics that he'll be covering, or if you need help with, will be DMV, CalFresh, and unemployment and disability. So if you need help with that, please reach out to him, or just, or to us, or just show up at the brew house tomorrow.
Who's next?
Oh, next, I don't have much. I, I was honored to be at the flag raising for our new flagpole, our beautiful flagpole out at the mall, and that was a lot of fun. And Lisa and I got to co-host, co-hoist a flag. That was cool, and it's a beautiful pole. I love it. And then I was there for Congressman Garcia presenting that check, so that was, that was really awesome to see him. He's such a personable guy and really has a vested interest in this town, which is, like Dave said, very, very, very encouraging to see. And I talked with Dave just a little bit, very briefly, about what's going on with the transient rental licenses after we extended the moratorium, and very pleased to see they've done a significant amount of work on that, so looking forward to rolling up our sleeves and diving into the rest of that. Other than that, I think that's about it. I think I need to dye my hair. I'm looking at myself on TV. I need to dye my hair.
It's very distinguished. Look how distinguished it is.
I just want to grow mine out.
Michael, you want to take the floor next?
I, I have nothing. Other than, I'm not sure of the dates. I just know that it's the first week in September. The first Thursday in September is the Red Cross Blood Drive at St. Catherine's, so...
Is it the 7th?
Yeah, I don't have the information with me on that.
Yeah, they sent us to, to... Okay.
Just a couple of things. I attended the Executive Committee meeting for Gateway Cities COG because there was not a quorum for the COG meeting when I went over at the beginning of the month. Always fun. And then, just wanted to wish everyone a good back-to-school time. We've been attending and going to these workshops with school staff and administration and a lot of city staff members, community members. I'm hopeful that the work that's being done regarding both support for students and teachers and parents, and the enforcement of the rules that they've created, are going to go smoothly, and hoping that everyone can make sure, if you have not seen what those are, to make sure to ask about that for the first week of school. But there's been some required orientations for everyone that you just mentioned as well, Councilmember De La Rosa, that I think are going to help get parent buy-in to give support to both the students and the teachers and administration. So I'm crossing my fingers and hoping for good things, but I think they're putting a lot of things in place as a plan to make it work the way that, that we want to see it work and that everybody in town wants to see it work, so it's, it's encouraging. The Gateway Cities COG will be here the first week of September, and I think you guys might have gotten an email to offer if you wanted to join in on that session for those two days. It's a retreat. COG members, council members, and city managers are welcome to attend. And so the areas of focus for the COG include transportation, wellness and health care, and then the environment. And so hopefully, we can develop some new initiatives for the upcoming year, and I'm excited to kind of see where that goes, but it's always kind of nice to have more people in the room to get those ideas going. And then if anybody wants to give volunteer golf cart rides to any of the COG members or visiting city managers, they would greatly appreciate it, and took great joy in a golf cart ride I took them on last year, so. And then also was very proud to attend the flag raising, got to do the California State Flag with Councilmember Schickling, and thankful, again, for Congressman Garcia's visit, thankful for Clayton Heard's visit tomorrow on behalf of Assemblymember Lowenthal. And just wanted to ask one question on a previous meeting that I was not here for, for an item that was, I believe, approved for a commercial permit to be able to have a non-electric vehicle approved, right? My question is if we need to look at either providing a written grace period into the current code for that, or if we need to look at an amendment to the code. I'm a little worried that if we provide a one-off approval of that, then it opens the door for everyone to get an approval of that, that same option to use a non-electric vehicle. So if we can add for our topic of discussion in the future and potentially come back with an item to review if we need to have a grace period, since it seems like we're not quite there yet on what we're doing, even though I think we should be moving in that direction. And if we're going to do that, what that grace period is and when it ends? And if we're not going to do that, then confirming the code is what the code should be.
Well, I think what happened, it was, and the city attorney was on that also, said "new" vehicle.
Right.
And so that kind of opened that door.
So do we need to just clarify what that is to make sure that it's clear for the vehicle clerk, it's clear for commercial entities, and it's clear for us? I, I think that it's good to have the ability to have that period of grace and figuring out what we're doing, but also if we're pushing towards that initiative, then it should either be extremely clear-cut that we're pushing this way, or there's a grace period, or there are certain exemptions or exemptions, and those should be labeled and called out so that it's specific.
I mean, if I could, I think it was, my view of it was it was a pretty, very narrow interpretation of the way the code is currently written, and I'm not sure from a staff standpoint that that's the direction we were recommending, so we will bring our, we expect to bring clarification on that code back to council, and to see what council wants, and if it's just new vehicles, or if it's a new commercial vehicle, whether it's a used vehicle, a new vehicle, new to the island, whatever it might be. So we'll bring that back to council so we can clarify that.
That'd be great, yeah. I think it's just, it's helpful just so that there's no question for people. They know ahead of time what to expect, so that's not confusing. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I attended everything else that everybody else went to. But question, is it the Newport boat that is renting e-bikes onboard, and they're coming to town with no helmets?
Yep.
Is there...
Bikes and e-bikes, I think.
Yeah, and e-bikes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a family of three and a family of four. Is there, can we have any discussion with them about perhaps they should be providing helmets with, for these folks? I mean, we're trying to make everybody else wear them, and then they come and they go, "Well, we rented it, we don't have to wear them." I don't know, it might just be a safe, from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, we can reach out to them, absolutely.
I did have a question. If we did want to attend the retreat, do we have to, like, sign up? Is there, like, a fee?
There was a registration. I don't believe there's a fee just for the retreat itself, but I'll double-check for you. I was going to reach out to Anna this, tomorrow morning.
I've received the emails about it, but there's never been a link to register with, so...
I think it was, in the most recent one, there was a link in it. Yeah. But I'll double-check it.
I didn't get the most recent one, then.
Let me reach out to Anna tomorrow morning first thing, and I'll get back to you guys on that, for sure.
What are the dates, one more time?
It's Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, the 4th and 5th of September. Yeah. And the conference is at the Canyon, yeah. And then dinner will be at the M.
Okay.
Definitely going.
Oh, that's our last time, huh?
Yeah, the whole thing was in Las Vegas, but there's more people this time, so.
That kind of worked.
Okay.
I'll figure it out.
Oral communications, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. It will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Jim Luke-Johann, you want to head up first?
Our auditors are here this week, so I'm literally answering audit questions there between. So I just wanted to make a public reminder about our return of ABBA, always one of the best-attended concerts of the year. It is coming up on Wrigley Stage on September 14th, beginning at 8:00 p.m. And I don't have the flyer printed out because we just got the final copy back, but that same day, all day long, and the following day, we will be incorporating events around the More Than Pink Walk and mammograms down on the Wrigley Stage area as well, so...
You said mammograms?
They're doing mammograms in a portable unit that'll be brought over courtesy of Catalina Island Health, and I don't remember the name of the agency on the mainland that's helping do that, unfortunately, but it's on the flyer that I will be bringing to future meetings, and it's all going online tonight. Yeah.
Well, that should be interesting, mammograms on Front Street. They'll be a hard topic.
In an enclosed vehicle, and...
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
And, so, yeah, the numbers looked really, really good. Whoever put... Whoever put that together.
Yeah. It is important to note that while the total number of visitors has been up, it's only been up in certain segments. There's other segments that are lagging. So we celebrate the total win, but we do need to be conscious of some declines in a few areas, too, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have guests in the audience today that would like to come up. We have Ron Trupa and Emily, Catalina Film Festival.
We have two minutes, I don't want. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces up here. Thank you for having us. This is obviously Emily Carroll, she's our senior programmer, and Val Schaefer.
Yes.
Our last year's winner of the Heart of Catalina Award. We are September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth this year. We're the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth on the island. We are stepping back from Long Beach, and we're just kind of. Films in the world on Movie Maker Magazine, which is like the bible for filmmakers to go to and, like, submit their films. We've also been, for the past eleven years, on the one-hundred list for the best-reviewed film festivals in the world as well, and Film Three Waves, obviously, the one that has twelve thousand festivals. So that's pretty big, and that's pretty cool for us and for the island itself, so we're excited about that. We always want the Catalina residents to experience the films because the rest of the world is so excited about it, so we would love for the residents to come out. We offer the films for free. You can bring your I. D., check in at the Hotel Metropolitan Conference Room, get a wristband, and go see whatever films you want to see, even in the theater, in the Avalon Theater, so.
That's awesome.
Please, yeah, I mean, it's just something we always do to give back. It's what we want to do. We want people to enjoy this art form that we bleed sweat and cry for many times in the fetal position of the shower. I didn't say that, man. But please come, enjoy, and we are also giving our hotel partners that have given us discounts and stuff for the festival-goers, free passes to go to the films as well. So all of their, all of their guests that are staying that weekend can also get film passes to come see.
Wow, that's, that's incredible.
So we're really just trying to let people be exposed to the beautiful films that we select that you've spent thousands of hours looking at as well. Next year is our fifteenth year.
Wow.
So, yeah, not only do I feel old, but we're sentimental about, you know, all the businesses and individuals that have helped us throughout the years and just sustained us and been the oxygen in our lungs. So we do have little things that we're planning now, moving into 2025, and we also want to help honor and celebrate a lot of individuals and businesses that have helped us throughout the years. So we won't give away some of those secrets, but stay tuned. Charlie Jones is helping with some of those. And last, we have a great artist, Emma Shay Simone, from Budapest, Hungary, that has designed our last two festival posters, and we have this for the mayor, Annie Marshall. If you want to come down and open it down here?
Cracked-out puppy, open it.
We have, put it on your wall, throw darts at Annie. I know you want to. In your office. Do you want me to rip it open for you? Whip it, Annie. So it's beautiful.
Aw.
Oh, wow. Oh, that's gorgeous. Those colors.
You've been a very big supporter of ours as well throughout the years, so we love you so much. You come, you, you always treat our filmmakers beautifully.
Yes, that's where you're at. Yeah. Smile. Thank you. I'll share with you that.
Thank you so much. Come out, we'd love to have you all, and we're here, and next year is fifteen years. So anything that we can do to help make more events come to the island. We've definitely learned, you know, the ins and outs, and we are excited about Circuit being here. Hopefully, we can get that to move some of the event-goers around as well, but anything we can do, I'm willing to be on an advisory panel just to really help smooth it out and bring a lot more events here so that there's less of the logistical hurdles that we've kind of navigated and figured out. I mean, it's fourteen years, so we're willing to help. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ron, thank you. Emily, thank you. You can just leave, you can leave the trash in that front seat, and we'll pick that up a little later. You don't have to. Thank you. The artist is incredible. Thank you so much. Any questions of Ron or Emily?
No, I love that poster. I have one already in my house, but it's not in a beautiful frame, but. It doesn't really need one, though. It's such a gorgeous poster. I love it.
Really is.
Yeah. Kudos to the designer, obviously.
Yeah. Okay. Any other oral communication? Okay, then let's get to the consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar. Item number one, approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting and the August sixth, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Item two, approve the disbursement for July twenty-ninth, 2024 through August ninth, 2024, totaling $2,967,779.59. Item three, League of California Cities Annual Voting Delegate for council to adopt a resolution appointing Mayor Marshall, Mayor Pro Tem Lisa Lavelle. And then, oh, that's it for consent.
Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve items one through three.
All second.
Call for the vote. Well, that's look, that looks different.
Yeah. What is that? Us is, yes?
There we go. Just regular plus, okay.
I got two pluses. Now there's four pluses.
Yeah, what's plus plus?
Oh, it's multiplied by two. Help, Mr. Wizard.
All pluses.
Okay, here we go. Thank you.
It's not letting us select.
Oh, voting in progress.
Oh, so we have to vote again?
Yes.
Oh.
It's not, yeah.
Is this the stuff that IT guy's going to work on?
Right. See?
Okay.
There you go.
Now that we got YouTube working, hi, Kristy.
Is she in there? What? It's Kristy? Kristy Love at home. We were having trouble with the YouTube thing, but no.
Again? There. Perhaps.
Okay, there we go. All eyes.
Okay. Okay, bring back the, okay. All right, you got the general business.
Okay, general business. First item, item number four on your agenda is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter nine dash seven, Article ten, antennas of the Avalon Municipal Code and adoption of exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act. And I believe we have Bennett Givens out there from BBK to address this matter.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm mayor and council, Bennett Givens. I'm an associate in Best Western Creagers Telecommunications Group. I have worked with city staff and together with Planning Commission have developed the ordinance that is up for discussion tonight. I've prepared a presentation which I will jump into now. Let me share my screen, bear with me a moment. All righty, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thanks, everyone. So we are here to discuss the wireless ordinance update for wireless facilities located outside of the public right-of-way. If there is, first going to go through some basics on state and federal law with regard to the city's authority to regulate wireless facilities, and then I'll discuss briefly the outline of the ordinance and the changes that we've made to the existing regulations. If there's one slide that I'd like you to take home with you, it would be this slide. This is the general national policy on wireless facilities, at least on the federal level. Generally, no local decision or regulation can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless service or telecommunications services. The FCC has sole authority to set RF emissions safety standards, and local localities cannot regulate the placement of wireless facilities based on RF emissions, except to ensure that the applicant has shown that it will comply with the FCC's guidelines and standards. The city is required to take timely action on a wireless application. The FCC has established what are known as shot clocks. These range from sixty days to one hundred and fifty days, and there's a deemed-approved remedy if the city does not reach a final decision on an application before the shot clock expires. All denials must be in writing and based on substantial evidence on the record. The city cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. Generally, the city has to treat wireless providers the same as other similar utilities. The wireless industry is afforded expedited appeals in the event of a denial, and there are certain modifications to an existing wireless facility that if they qualify as an eligible facilities request, the city has no discretion and must approve. This is a large, a general overview of the federal legal framework. The big change in, for telecommunications and wireless facilities in particular was the adoption of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. There's two main sections of the act that relate to local authority on the siting of wireless facilities, is there Section three thirty-two and Section two fifty-three. Generally, that's where we find the requirement that local regulations and city actions cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of any entity to provide personal wireless services or telecommunications services. Next, we, in 2012, we have the Middle Class Tax and Relief Act that established what are known as eligible facilities requests. Those are those modifications which, if they qualify, the city has no discretion and must approve. Finally, the FCC has a number of orders, declaratory rulings, and regulations that interpret the federal statutes that carry the force and effect of law. As I mentioned, the city has to act on a wireless application in a timely manner. The FCC has interpreted that mandate from Congress and has established these shot clocks, which range from sixty days to one hundred and fifty, broken out by wireless facility application types. So you have eligible facilities requests, small wireless facilities, colocations, and other. In addition, as of last year, the state legislature has expanded deemed-approved remedies for failure to make a final decision within the applicable shot clock. And now, in the state of California, if a city misses a shot clock, that application may be deemed approved by operation of law for all types. The Congress has also made the FCC the sole authority for setting RF emissions standards. When siting wireless facility, we do get a number of public comment that target RF emissions and the perceived negative health impacts imposed by those facilities. Direct or indirect concerns over the perceived health effects of RF emissions may not serve as substantial evidence to support the denial of an application where an applicant has demonstrated that they are in compliance with the FCC standards. Similarly, claims that a proposed wireless facility will result in diminished property values that are rooted in a concern about perceived health effects of RF emissions cannot constitute substantial evidence to support a denial of an application. Occasionally, we'll hear arguments that RF emissions or a hypersensitivity to RF emissions requires accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act or the Fair Housing Act. As of today, their hypersensitivity to RF emissions does not require accommodation. As I mentioned before, there are certain modifications to an existing facility. These are known as eligible facilities requests. So long as they do not, they involve the, these are modifications to an existing site that involves a colocation or addition of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, or replacement of transmission equipment. And so long as they qualify and meet a number of criteria set forth by the FCC, the local jurisdiction cannot deny and must approve the eligible, any qualifying eligible facilities There's been a number of FCC orders that have come into effect. I'll talk about a couple of them here that are relevant for the ordinance update we're discussing this evening. In 2018, we have the moratorium order. It's generally prohibited cities from making express or de facto moratorium on processing wireless facility applications. This also would be broad enough to preempt local jurisdiction from placing a cap on the number of wireless facilities that can be located within the city at any time. In 2018, we have the adoption of the Small Cell Order, created a new category of wireless application types called small cells or small wireless facilities. These are generally deployed with rights-of-way on utility poles or streetlights. The city of Avalon actually, in 2019, acted to adopt new regulations and standards for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, largely in reaction to the FCC's Small Cell Order. In 2020, we had two eligible facilities request orders. These generally brought in the application of what qualifies as an eligible facilities request, and these are certain modifications which the city has no discretion and must I will skip past through the Small Cell Orders discussion. These are generally treated under the, inside the right-of-way ordinance. There is a potential for small wireless facilities outside the public right-of-way, which we've accounted for in the ordinance, but I would say that is not the focus of the ordinance update. In addition, there's been some updates in state law, most recently with the adoption of AB nine sixty-five, which created a batch broadband permit processing, which is a simultaneous processing of two or more substantially similar broadband permit applications that must be reviewed and issued under a single permit. The, these are capped based on population size of the city, so the city could place a limit of twenty-five batch broadband applications under a single permit based on your population size. These is generally allow a wireless provider to apply for a number of substantially similar sites and not just cover their wireless equipment, but also the supporting infrastructure as well, which would include fiber optic cables, utility lines, and other items that they may need. And it's another example of a state law that facilitates the deployment of wireless infrastructure. Switching gears, we'll now discuss the update to the city's code. So after the adoption of the 2018 Small Cell Order by the FCC, the city adopted its own regulations for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way in 2019, those four. The city's wireless regulations for facilities outside the public right-of-way are located in Title Nine, Article ten, which was lasted, updated in nineteen ninety-seven. All of the acts and FCC orders that I have just discussed have all happened in the interim since the city last updated its wireless ordinance. So the wireless ordinance would apply to all antennas and wireless facilities on private and public properties located outside the public right-of-way. It establishes a number of exemptions from Title Nine, Article ten of the code. These are typical for what we'd see in other jurisdictions across the state. They provide exemptions for OTARs or over-the-air reception devices. You may know them better as rooftop satellite dishes, broad, TV broadcast antennas, amateur radio, public safety. radio, public safety facilities, and certain temporary facilities that will be in place for less than seven days, generally in an emergency situation, or, and an exception for distributed antenna systems.
So, I'm sorry Bennett, to be, to make it simpler for me. That means I can put a dish on my roof and not have to tell anybody about it? Don't ask for permission from anyone?
No, so thank you for your question. These are exemptions from Title IX, Article 10. So these facilities would still be subject to the rest of the city code. They would just not need to follow all the requirements for wireless facilities that are in the proposed ordinance tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, slides. So in general, we've established three general permit processes for wireless applications outside the public right-of-way. These are broken out in, by applicable shot clock. So for those facility applications that are subject to the shortest 60-day shot clock, we have created a new permit type called an administrative wireless permit. It will be reviewed by the planning director. There's no public hearing, but the applicant may appeal to the planning commission. For wireless applications subject to a 90-day shot clock, we have set forth a site plan review requirement that will be reviewed and processed by the planning commission. And last, we have a conditional unit, use permit and site plan review requirement for all other types that are subject to the 150-day shot clock. In addition, the proposed ordinance also updates application submittal requirements and establishes wireless-specific findings of approval. It sets forth standard conditions of approval. This is an important addition as these standard conditions of approval would be codified in the city code and would apply even in the event of a deemed approval under our law if the city misses the applicable shot clock. It also, the ordinance also includes a limited exception process for requesting exemptions from the design, development, and location standards. There are a number of criteria that an applicant can request a limited exception. This is a very helpful mechanism we've used in other jurisdictions. It essentially allows the city to get a preview of what the applicant may argue later if litigation were to arise concerning the application, and generally allows the city to respond. And it includes this important safety valve to allow the city to add limited waivers of certain requirements if need be. In addition, the ordinance establishes location, design, and development standards, including on a number of items, including aesthetics, landscaping, setbacks, and lighting. All wireless facilities need to be designed to incorporate concealment elements and screening to be a stealth facility. They need to be designed to be the least visible means possible and be aesthetically compatible with the surrounding area and structure. We've established some preferred zones and locations within the commercial, special commercial, resort, recreation, and public zones. And wireless facilities will be prohibited in floodplains, sensitive species areas, and on any parcel within a residential zone. Wireless facilities are subject to the height restrictions and setbacks of the underlying zone. If there are no applicable height restrictions in the zone, the wireless facility cannot exceed 50 feet. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions as well.
Well, is the 50 feet requirement a state or federal requirement, or is that recommended by the city?
That is a requirement recommended by the city. That was set by, in concert with city staff.
Well, there's nothing really wireless about this. You still have wires on poles and antennas and everything, so I don't, wireless is kind of a misnomer. So, okay.
One of my questions, I don't necessarily how this would be like logistically on, I guess, federal end or city end, but say an entity is gonna add an antenna and it's just still using the same bandwidth that the city has, and that's already low as it is. So how do we go about, is that like a reason for them to be denied? Or is that just a problem that we're gonna have to deal with?
Potentially, yes. The FCC also oversees interference issues between carriers and first responders. The wireless industry deploys a number of facilities at first responder sites. It's not, it would not be an issue of first impression by any means. They are generally cooperative in working with local jurisdictions and first responders to correct any interference issues. And the FCC has authority to oversee that arises.
If we know that, that maybe that they're not being as honest as they should with the bandwidth that they're giving us, and we're a little concerned with the FCC approving it, is there anything that the city could do, like an ordinance or anything on this end?
Generally, the city does not have authority to set the frequency bandwidth that the wireless industry may utilize. That is an area of federal preemption by the FCC. But certainly, the city can assist and work through interference issues if they do arise.
Thank you.
Generally, I think for applications like this, they are required to have proof of bandwidth through a license from the FCC to begin with.
So they should see that anyways?
Right. And they normally also have to show or prove what they're, where they're operating to ensure that they're not interfering with other providers' services or with emergency services.
That makes us feel better.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's the potential, it's not necessarily on our plate to have to manage that. The FCC is the one that's managing it. I think what a lot of people are calling for in the state especially is that right now, there's no, besides the FCC approving things, there's no set of checks and balances on broadband, wireless, and ISPs to be able to prove that they are actually offering the services they say they're offering. And so a number of people, I think, have been calling more frequently for this to become a regulated utility like other utilities are regulated and have a set of checks and balances to be able to prove that they're offering what they say they're offering. I feel like that's still probably a couple of years away, at least, to be able to have the legislation written for that, but it's, it's definitely being called for more often, I think, than I've, than when we first started on council. So in the last few years even, it's become more of a kind of.
Is that something that we could advocate for as a city? At least for ourselves? I don't know who would have to write a letter to.
I mean, we can certainly explore whatever options we have. I mean, I know all cities are struggling with this of trying to.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't know if we can wait a couple more years, you know? We're desperate now.
Yeah. I think part of what we were trying to do with some of the funds we had potentially set aside, if the FFA doesn't get approved and that money doesn't go towards that application, was that we could potentially have a study done within the city to be able to track actual usage. And then my understanding also is that the CPUC does have some level of investigatory ability. And so I guess that they've been exercising that a little more frequently as well because of concerns they've heard from people, so, yeah.
Okay, so here I go again. So, I wanna put a dish on top of my roof. I need to come to the city to ask, because there's a wire that's gonna go there, and the wire's gonna be attached to whose pole? So, the wireless pole.
The dish, the dish goes on your house and the wire goes inside your house. It doesn't go across the street and doesn't go to a pole, because the dish is pulling a signal from space.
Okay, how about then an antenna?
Yeah, the same thing. The wire goes in your house. The antenna's on your roof, and the wire doesn't have to go to a pole. It just goes down into.
Why do we have so many damn wires all up and down the alleys? What are all of those?
Cable, electrical.
Cable, power.
And all of those stay there, and are there any of those that are defunct?
I'm sure there must be.
Probably. And, and we would like to, I mean, we explore with new proposals to try to put utilities underground. It is just a long process.
Yeah, I just wonder if some of their, really aren't even used at all.
Right.
Or they should be required, if they're adding them, to make them look decent and put them together and bundle them instead of just, well, you know what the alleys look like? Horrendous.
The majority of poles that we have in town, my understanding is they're actually not, they would not be considered legal in most cities in the world, because of the size of our alleys and the lack of setback from houses and the proximity to multiple utilities on one pole. So, yeah, undergrounding would be great if we can get there, but also I know that that's both an expensive undertaking and a long-term undertaking.
Exactly.
Right, that would be passed on to the taxpayers, speaking from, I work for a utility company.
Unless you could get the homeowners to pay for it.
I mean, they have a nice little cushion of profit, they'd probably pull out of that.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. But also, I've seen some wires hanging down.
Yes.
In alleys. It's like, okay, so if you're gonna disconnect some, some services, you know, at least cut them back so that they're not just hanging down. And I know that they're not, those are usually cable or telephone or something like that, so they're not live, they're not gonna shock you or hurt you, I mean, because Edison would never leave a live wire hanging down.
Right.
But still, it's the perception. People get freaked out, because people did come to me, there was one close to my house, and they were like, oh my God! And I'm like, it's okay, but I'll, I'll call broadband and tell them to cut it down, please.
Cut it down. All right, any questions of Bennett?
The only question I just had and was trying to kind of find through all of this was if there's an appeal process, is there already a form in place for that? Or do we need to create one through staff?
I believe I'll defer to Kelly on that point, but I believe that the city would utilize its existing appeal request form.
Okay, so nothing new has to be made for it?
Yeah, we don't have a special appeal form, but we've already started working with Bennett, and they've drafted us an application form specifically for these new wireless permit process to make sure we're getting all of that detailed information related to the ordinance upfront.
And then if anyone has created an application prior to this, because of course it'll go through the readings and everything else for the time, are they under any previous ordinances then until this is in place, so this is still 30 to 60 days away from completion? How would that work?
I think that's something we're gonna have to talk about. I don't think it's appropriate to make that, to answer that question right now.
Okay.
And did anybody call in? Nobody's, no. Oh, they can't do that anywhere.
They can't do that anywhere.
Okay, that's right. You gotta get off the couch and come down here.
All righty, council, what is your pleasure?
Then I will introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon, amending Chapter 9-7, Article 10, Antennas of the Avalon Municipal Code Regarding Wireless Facilities, and Adoption of Exemption Findings Under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Pushing in a second. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thanks, Bennett. Thank you, Bennett.
Bye, thank you.
Item number five.
Item number five, Sunset Bar and Grill Transportation Permit Application. Jocelyn Francis will be able to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Yeah, so the Sunset Bar and Grill, they have a commercial autoet permit that was approved. As you all know, they're a new restaurant that opened up, and they're looking to provide transport services comparable to some of the other restaurants that we have that are a little bit further out of town.
I don't have an issue with justice because of the location. I think it makes sense.
Yeah, 100%.
And it's an existing approved commercial autoet.
It's a, it's a difficult place to park when there's a function up there, so I think this was great.
So in the loading zone is the 100 block of Catalina. Where is that?
That's where the little bus stop used to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where the canyon picks up as well, right there by the plaza.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I imagine they're gonna be coming down and then going down to Scanzo and turning kinda like this, yeah, that same way? Okay. All righty.
Well, because it's a, it's a golf cart, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have to follow the trucker, they can take either.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
They have a little route map.
Okay.
So they're just like coming straight down and going back up.
Okay, okay. All righty.
I'll move to approve the transportation permit for the Sunset Bar and Grill to utilize the commercial autoet permit to pick up and drop off guests to the restaurant with the stated conditions.
All second.
Moved in second. A call for the vote? Item number six.
Item number six is a request to ratify a prior action, that being the purchase of a pump for the Pebley Beach lift station. And as stated in the, in the staff report, we have a number of pumps, three pumps for this lift station. We recently encountered a situation where two of those pumps failed, which put us in a little bit of a dire strait of not having another pump on the shelf. So we had to get one ordered both for timing and logistics issues and to get it in the queue, and that's, we went forward with that, and this is asking council to ratify that prior action. Jack, do you have anything additional?
Yeah, no, also a quick update on that. We, the pump, it's on its way. It should be here November, I'm sorry, on the 11th of September.
Okay. Any discussion?
The only question I have is if we should be keeping at least one additional pump on site at all times besides this, in addition to the two that are getting used, so if we can make sure to do that.
Yes.
I don't know if it makes sense for one or two possibly, but whatever, it makes sense to make sure that, just because we can't have that fail, so.
Right.
Yeah.
To always have one on the shelf.
Okay. Is that, do you feel like that's sufficient, or would it be better to plan for two?
If, I, I think we're doing some work on a repair of one. We decided we were able to repair one, which will give us, I think, a backup to the backup.
Okay.
How old are the pumps that failed?
I'm sorry?
How old are the pumps that failed?
Um, that's a good question. I think Bob had mentioned five to seven-year shelf life, was that right?
Okay.
And then also a quick update on the rebuilt. We, there's one that's being rebuilt right now that's coming back, so with this one, we will have two on the shelf.
Okay.
But one would be a rebuilt, this would be a new one. And then currently, right now, we have three pumps in the system. John Gilbert, the electrician, building inspector, was able to do some troubleshooting with it. We thought it was actual mechanical motor issue. It actually turned out to be an electric issue that he was able to fix, so now we have three. So we're, we're looking so in good shape, but to Councilmember LaBelle's point, it'd be great to have two on the shelf, even if one is a rebuilt one and then one is this new one. Oh, and we do have the bypass as well.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true too.
Excellent, okay.
And, and then the shelf life, sorry, Bob, the shelf life, the shelf life on, on these pumps usually?
They, they tend to go out of warranty, but they sell, they're good for another three, five years.
Oh, okay, okay. Seems like we're buying a lot of stuff for that. Sewer treatment.
Yeah. Yes.
Was that?
That's one question I, I thought I would anticipate, is that why are we replacing so many of these pumps so frequently? And one of the things is because we don't have a macerator to break down and grind the materials that are going through there, through the pumps. So, but that's part of the assessment, and that's part of what we're gonna put in, is a macerator.
Okay, excellent.
And what was that screw thing we just put in?
That's different. That's another piece of equipment. Do you wanna talk about the screw press?
Sorry?
Sorry.
Yeah, the screw press is up and running. It's pretty exciting. Get out there at the solids pit, I know that you all drive up at the very end up there and see the solids pit. It's working great, okay? So the, the screw press is what takes the solids out of the sewage flow and then puts that in a pit so it can go up to the landfill, okay? So it removes the solids. The one thing that's important about the screw press is we are using high. The one thing that's important about the screw press is we are using high potable water use and high energy on the centrifuge. The other piece of equipment, this has radically reduced both that in this first month here. So it's really good news that we're gonna be saving a lot of water and saving a lot of energy, and it makes great product, too.
So the screw press comes into the whole system after where a macerator would be, and so the macerator would come before the pumps to help the pumps out? And so that would be down by the lift station then, if we had one?
The macerator is right before the pumps, and so we're gonna have one when we finish our major sewer project this year, which is one at Catherine and one at Pebley Beach, okay? And what, just think about it, is your garbage disposal. Anything that's in there that's kinda solid, it's gonna break that up into little bits, and especially rags. So rags, wipes, radiate wipes.
Yeah, yeah.
And so those rag up, they call rag up the pumps, and then that really, that starts destroying the pumps, okay? So this should bring a lot of longevity to it, and also helps the whole process in processing the sewage.
And not to just keep beating this, but have we looked at a macerator? Have we?
Yes, yes. We haven't designed, they're part of the major sewer project, the annual sewer project. And so there'll be one at Catherine, likely by the planter in the ground by, right there by where Crescent, at the elbow. And then we'll have it actually in the manhole right at Pebley Beach Road there, too.
Okay.
And how long do those last?
Yeah, okay.
How long do they last?
They're supposed to have like a five-year useful life before you have to service them, and they're in a manhole or in a trough, and then you just pick up the unit, and you know, it's like something that's about three feet long, about a foot, and you pick it up, you send it in, two or three weeks later, you get it back, and so we'd be under the same condition we are now, but then, so we don't have to have a second one to back up. It's not as critical as it is. It helps reduce down, you know, the rags and stuff in there, but you can run it without it, so, because they have all stainless steel parts. It's a pretty dramatic piece of equipment, too, with the cutter heads. When you look at it, it's, it really does its job.
He gets excited about everything.
I get excited about this.
I know you do.
Well, it is cool. I used to work up there a while ago, so yeah, we've made a lot of progress, because it smells better.
Yeah, and then the odor control will be also part of that major sewer project, okay?
I suggest YouTube-ing Muffin Monster. That's what it's called, and you can see it in action. There's video of it. Muffin Monster, it's quite fascinating. I became just as excited as Bob.
Oh, no. Now there's two of ya.
Bennett. That's great. Okay.
I'll make a motion to determine that an emergency existed and ratify action by the city manager and public works director to purchase a new Flight Six submersible pump for the Pebley Beach lift station, make the affirmative finding that the X-Slam Water Solutions, Inc. has satisfied the sole source of requirement as specified in the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 3-4.111B, and allocate funds from the sewer fund 108-25-6552 for the procurement in the amount of not to exceed $38,500.
All second.
Okay, Councilmember De La Rosa. He be smiling every time he's saying that to me. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Well, if there's no further action, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.